We'll do minutes. Remember, get them. Yeah, we have time for two now and then.
John?
Yeah, I'll pull up.
Mayor, do you have anything besides the agenda?
No.
Start with public works then. It's your lucky day. Page ninety-seven in the budget. I'm looking at the organizational chart. This is current, correct? Or is it? Huh? What'd you say? What's typo? It's the French spelling. So, we have two engineers? I didn't...
No, we don't.
That's what I was asking. Is it a hope for thing?
That's a hope for.
Okay.
That's more than a hope for.
It's in there.
It's in the budget too.
In the budget.
Yeah, I saw that, but I didn't think we had them yet. Okay. And we moved one clerical into the tax collector's office. So, two clericals here. I don't have anything else on the narratives. Does the counselor have anything on the narratives? Melissa, is this a typo that I missed something? Page one oh two, it says general government building operation? Or is it under the DPW?
So, when I did was even though the summary, building operations is in general government, we moved that operation into the DPW under Joe Kip. So, I thought for use of this process, how we put it in this part of the budget.
Is there a plan to move the entire account to DPW then?
Well, the account is there, but it's an accounting, it's a UMS accounting number.
Okay.
Building operations is in general government, not for, just kind of like cemeteries are in cores, even though in our city, John is parking recreation, so he's in group six and group four. So, I can't re-label that.
You can't re-label it?
Valerie would not agree.
I see. So, in other words, there's a DOR rule that says you can't do it.
It's not a rule. It's like she would have to back it out to report to them in the way that they like.
Okay. All right, I just didn't know. There's nothing in general in the building operations that seems different. We're down a few thousand. But anybody have any questions?
Is Dennis part-time or full-time?
Dennis is full-time. There are two part-timers. Just two, right?
Just two. One has between eighteen and twenty hours. The other one only has eleven hours maybe. And that's about eleven hours, very limited is what you can do.
Right, right. We have a...
I don't have any questions on building operations. Do you guys? Going to DPW administration. One, the reason line two FT regular is down is one less clerk is in the office, correct? Okay.
And that's made up in the finance.
Yes. Right. We saw that yesterday.
Just for those who didn't watch yesterday's program.
It's going to soon go away. Sorry.
So, the bottom line is simply one less position. Anybody? I don't have any other questions. I don't have any other questions?
Nope.
I'm curious though. This is just curiosity. Why did your longevity go down? Is that you, Joe? Went from nine hundred to six hundred. What is that?
That's correct. The former office manager had longevity.
Oh, that's where that was. You didn't have longevity?
I do. My company five hundred.
I got it. I understand now. Got it, got it, got it. All right. Fuel? Gentlemen, fuel? Anything you want to add? Say anything about fuel? Prices are going up. This probably won't be enough. About three dollars a gallon almost.
Well, we're hoping it's going to be okay. I think we've got a little bit left for this year, so looking at...
We have the same methodology that we've done for a long time, and we just, we pick a day and go, you know, this is the average of what it's been, and this is how much... We do a calculation of how much fuel has been consumed by all of the departments. Then, you know, DPW takes, keeps track of that, and then we pick a number. And that number was before prices started growing by ten cents a week.
Yeah.
You know, when we were, when we were working this out, we can agree that, Joe.
Yeah, and hopefully at some point, they will...
Start dropping.
Start dropping.
Do we get to buy bulk at a time, or is that...
Does that lock in the current price?
Yes.
So, you buy a lot and they deliver it as you need it?
They deliver it as we need it.
You prepay for everything?
We don't prepay. You order an amount? We lock in the price, and we have two thousand gallon capacity, two thousand gallons of gas in it. So, if they deliver fifteen hundred gallons, then we pay them with fifteen hundred. Based on that locked-in price. And then there's a...
Escalator.
Escalator based on some formula that the Commonwealth uses. That could go up or down a penny or so. But for the most part, it's locked in at that price. But we don't, we don't pay, we don't, we don't pay for anything until we get it. And the same, same thing with diesel.
I don't know how it worked. Okay. Going on to engineering, page one oh four. So, the salary line is hope for an extra engineer. Would that be like at the same level of expertise as the current engineer? Or are we looking for an assistant engineer?
I believe it's junior engineer.
Engineer.
We're, we're, it's pretty hard to... I think what we're looking for is someone just out of engineering school, something like that.
For entry-level position.
Dan, because, I mean, we'll be doing the salary review, and of course, as you've come up, you know, our current system right now has nine steps, which would assume that if someone came in fairly green, they come in at step one, which is a difference of almost ten years' experience. So, you know, right out of college versus being in the industry. And that's how we came up with the number was, there's a, there's a step in grade currently for an engineer. And if someone was to actually be hired, you know, literally out of college, or just with an internship or something, we would expect them to start...
Yeah, that's why it's like fifty-some, fifty, whatever it is.
Right, so it's not so much that the... So, in the current position, yes, they would be juniors, the person who's been here longer, but the position itself is the same based on the paid-on experience, given our current structure.
And the salary of a new physician doesn't take in, the money we see here, you have to add also onto that the benefits that we have to add to that position.
Correct.
Because it's full-time.
Yes.
Insurance is everything.
Correct.
When someone says, we're only paying them fifty thousand, I'm going, well, yeah, but you have to add another twenty for all the benefits and everything else, the medical. If you add up all that, it can get pretty high. I don't know if it's twenty or whatever, but... Okay. I don't have anything else other than that. Do you guys have anything on engineering?
Just had a quick question. Maybe you answered it. I stepped out of the room, sorry. I certainly understood when we had a long-term person here who'd been here forever, there was huge institutional knowledge, and that person then left. Think of Jim Cretschen. Now, we have somebody who is newer, doesn't have as much institutional knowledge, and yet, we're looking for a second person.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't been here long as Joe, but that position has been advocated for for the day I walked in the door.
That's correct.
Every time I've been over to the department, I certainly seem to think that... But I just wanted to hear more about...
If you were to talk to Jim Cretschen, he would tell you that he had been, he was huddling me for five years or so, that I need some help, I need some help. It has nothing to do with institutional knowledge. It has to do with just the volume of work that...
And all the changes too, right? All the changes.
Regulatory changes are a big thing, and we're looking at additional regulatory changes coming with this, just the stormwater. I mean, that's, that's the elephant in the room. We don't know what that is yet, but that's, that's coming. And this junior engineer, that will be a big part of his duties is to make sure we comply with those, because there's physical work that has to be done with that, not just making sure that everything gets done or that somebody else is doing it. He's going to have to do that himself. That's something he'll be doing. That'll be exciting.
And we outsource in all sorts of departments, other engineering services, because we don't have the capacity or a specialty in any particular given thing. So, we pay, outsource engineers all the time, you know.
And that'll be reduced if we have an extra person to a certain extent.
For smaller things maybe, but you know, but one engineer is small.
The big thing is that we're planning for the future. We know that there's extra work coming on top of what this engineer has.
All right, yeah.
So, it's not that, it's not that this guy's coming on. He's going to be able to take some of this and lower the cost. We know there's costs out there already. We've got to, we've got to get ahead of that.
Thank you. What about the computer services? Was that extra seven thousand?
Well, you've got to set the guy up with, with his whole workstation and make sure he has AutoCAD and all that stuff. You've got to, you've got to give him the tools to do what you want him to do.
Oh, so that's for the new engineer? Okay, understand it? Okay. Anything else? I'm going to go to highway. I noticed in Batumah's concrete, of course, you asked for two hundred thousand.
Yep.
Is it chapter ninety money, are we getting any yet still?
Chapter ninety money has been leveled for the forever, never, never.
What is it now?
Four hundred eighty thousand dollars.
We have the same every year, even though the cost of everything goes up, we get the same money?
That's correct. That's, that's correct. And I use the example that we've been eighty miles a road, and they should be resurfaced every ten years. Obviously, there's some that can go thirty years, some that's going to go a lot less than ten. So, if you usually average of ten, eighty miles a road, you should be doing eight miles a year. You're probably doing two, two and a half. And we rely on chapter ninety, so that's... That's evidenced by what our roads look like. Obviously, we've, we've done a lot with that ninety thousand that's in there now by just putting some shims out there, like on Clark Street or Glendale or Upper Laugue Road. We want to put some on East Street this year. That just kind of binds things together, buys us a little bit of time. But it's, that's not a complete resurfacing. That's going to go twelve years. It may go five or six years for it. But it'll buy us a little bit of time. So, it was our hope that we got a little bit extra money, we can do a little bit more. Understand that funds aren't there, so we'll do what we can do.
Joe, I have a quick question. So, in the spectrum of what you can do in a road, the smallest thing you can do is fill potholes. The other end is kind of complete redoing the road. And the shim is somewhere between, it's like segments, you're just sort of... What is a shim? I guess is what I was asking.
Shim is just a, a quick overlay that you're, you're, you're just taking the rough spots out, just kind of tying it together. To do it right, you shouldn't, you should mill down two inches and put back two inches. By not milling it and by putting this overlay, some places you might get an inch, some places you might get two and a half inches. But it's just something to kind of tie in all the patched potholes so that they... We can patch a pothole, this, that patch is going to stay, but right next to it, that's going to pop out. And so, what we're doing is we're just, we're just tying it in.
And what they're doing on Main Street is highway. That's the state.
That's Mastah.
And they're, they're milling.
Yeah, but they're doing the...
They're doing it right.
Two inches, take out two, put two back.
Why don't we make all our roads state-owned?
That's a pretty good... So, Joe, that extra hundred and ten thousand dollars from what you asked for and what you got, what would you have done with it?
Another road?
Another, I mean, how much road?
Well, we would have done, we would have done, used it for more shimming, say like Center Street, something like that, where Center Street's all beat up. We would put a shim over that, or Prospect Street. It would, it would buy it, we would use it to buy us a little more time.
Would it buy you a year?
No, actually, if you look at someplace like Glendale, we put Glendale on, on three years ago. That's holding pretty good.
And that's just a very thin layer of...
That's just a very, very typical. That's correct.
If it's done soon enough?
If it's done soon enough.
Before the water really destroys it?
That's correct. If, if, if you were to go on Clap Street where Joe lives, you wouldn't be able to do that. That's, you wouldn't need total reconstruction. That's too far.
Well, Joe lives on the moon. We know that. Every time I drive on that, I feel like I should have a moon...
We look at it as natural speed bumps.
That's a good thing to think about.
So, again, again, there's candidates where you can do this, and there's roads that are candidates. You just, you've got to go with a different method.
So, if you have a road like Clap Street, and you want it to redo it, you'd have to tear that apart because it's so bad. That probably costs half a million dollars, even for just a small section. If you're digging it down and resurfacing all the way down?
If you, if you look at a mill and fill, you're probably talking five dollars a square yard. If you look at total reconstruction, you're looking at thirty dollars a square yard.
And you don't know until you get in there, what you think you need?
Well, no, you could...
You can tell for Clap Street, it's total reconstruction. Okay. We're saying all this for our new rep, so that he gets a smart check in. Anything else on highway, everybody?
What's this seventy-five thousand capital?
Seventy-five thousand capital was for a piece of equipment, but that was taken out. That's got to go... I wasn't sure at the time, I wasn't sure of how the capital program was going to work and it's going to be working.
You thought it might be in the budget rather than for supplemental?
Correct. You'll, you'll see that, you'll see that when you get to the sewer budget too.
In other words, the department has their making capital request, and you're, you're funding them through either free cash or some other method. You're not, you're not doing it directly in the budget.
No.
I'm going to snow emergency.
What does that say about that?
The two thousand eighteen actual, no, that wasn't the actual, that was what's budgeted. What did we spend this year? Do we know, Mel?
Two hundred plus two six one.
Four hundred and sixty-one? That's a little less than last year.
Yes.
Yeah, and that request is...
And that's coming out of like free cash or something? Two thousand eighteen free cash?
Right, so that we don't start two thousand nineteen.
Okay. So, you know, Bill, we always, we're allowed to declare snow emergency, which allows us not to have to put a ton of money in there. And then all of a sudden, we don't have it. We can refund it later. Because if there's no snow, that money sits there.
That's right.
We had, we had some good years.
Isn't there something else? If you put it in a line, then you have to have at least that much the following year? So, doesn't also give you a lot of flexibility?
Oh, yeah, that's that rule, right?
Right, so, so if we were to change this to three hundred thousand, or like even, let's just say we change it to five hundred thousand, that's, you know, that year, that would mean that if we ever wanted to bring it back down to four or three hundred thousand, we would not be allowed to deficit spend. And then we would go to, going, oh, it's December, light snow in April, you know, and it makes for...
You can raise it from one year to the next.
You can't lower it. It seems like a silly rule. But, okay. But that's a rule because it's the only line, I think, that we're allowed to deficit spend, right? C O R rule. Streetlights. So, from two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen, we went to a hundred and five thousand dollars from seventy-three, four-ten. What is that? Do we get more streetlights or...?
We're getting more repairs needed on the streetlights.
And are these the, not the LEDs, but the xenon ones?
Yeah, there's, there's several different kinds of streetlights, and, you know, they're getting over.
Are we able to replace any of them with the LEDs we did?
Wherever we can, we do, but a lot of them we can't, unless you just change out everything.
You have to change out the entire structure?
That's correct.
If you're going to put an LED?
Change out the whole head and everything. It's not, it's not a matter of just changing the bulb from, you know, high-pressure sodium to an LED.
So, so this doesn't replace the LEDs. It only maintains the existing lighting, whether it's an LED structure or sodium or something.
Now, the other thing we're finding is we have a lot of decorative posts out in the subdivisions.
Yeah, there's one next to my daughter's house.
And we're finding that a lot of them just rot at the base and fall over.
Because they're wood.
Because they're wood. So, we need to replace them. We had one do that in Cottis Street parking lot. So, we had to, have to replace them. So, those can get expensive when we're replacing, not only, you're not only calling the guy in to fix the bulb because the bulb is out there, having to replace the whole structure because it fell over.
Are you replacing it with wood?
No.
So, it's a good to talk to the planning department to make sure that new developments are put wooden.
Well, they don't, they don't.
Don't anymore.
They have newer, newer...
All right.
In terms of bidding for the, the lighting repair work, what kind of response do we get? How many contractors? I imagine people...
We, we ask for a three-price quote every year. We get the same three people bidding. And it seems like one guy is always the lowest. And I think I attribute that to the fact that he knows our account. He knows. So, he knows what he's in for, so we, you know... In late July, we do the same thing all over again, we start with a three-price quote.
So, then that, that's a price per hour? Then you commit to, how does, how does that work?
It's, it's broken down in several, several different things, whether it's price per hour, whether it's price for, or price for a structure, or a price, you know, different things depending on what he has to do. Price per hour if he's just changing the bulb, but what's the price if you have to change out one decorative?
Yeah, but at the beginning of the year, you don't know exactly what, what's going to be needed that full year.
You're correct, you don't.
You have to like say, okay, so for this category, that category, and this category, I put... And three people?
These are two different contractors depending on the type of lighting it is, like if one's underground.
Yes, yes.
I remember that.
One only does overhead, and he doesn't do underground, and one does underground, doesn't do overhead.
Would you?
Who's taking over Karen's job of driving streets looking for old posts?
Isn't that in the mayor's chapters?
I don't think Nicole's doing that. I don't know. Motor repair. I have no questions. Gentlemen. Anything there, Joe, that you feel needs explaining? I, I see minor increases in salary. I assume that's Cola's steps or something?
Yeah, one of, one of the things in there is a equipment maintenance tracking software. That's something that we really need. It's time to start tracking our equipment as far as what we're doing for maintenance. So, the chief's looking for a police crew that you can pull it up and say, look, and I've already put X amount of dollars in repairs in this thing, you know, and then the thing's killing me here, you know, that type of thing.
Where is that line? Professional license? I don't even see the line. Is it under motor repair?
Yeah, it's under the...
You consider it a toll maybe?
Yeah, yeah, two of each lines.
So, it's... Yeah, that went up to, what, it was three thousand this year?
Yeah, right.
So, you started tracking stuff for it this year?
No, we didn't, we didn't. But if, but if you look at actual, two thousand seventeen, we spent eight hundred dollars out there, so that's...
Okay. Traffic?
Traffic. That's where we apply all our traffic paint, all our signs.
That's mostly for supplies, and painting is done by contractors?
Painting for the center lines and edge lines, well, center lines is done by, and edge lines. We don't do edge lines on every street. We don't, actually, we don't do the center lines on every street. But the most major streets, we put center lines. That's done by a contractor. That's usually twelve and fourteen thousand dollars a year. But all the crosswalks, we paint all the crosswalks.
You do them all in-house?
Yeah.
Continuing to hazardous waste. Now, if people have hazardous waste, I had this question. I wasn't sure how to answer it. How do they deal with that? They bring it to the highway garage?
We don't take hazardous waste right now. What we do is have, we'll have a hazardous waste day.
I see. So, someone has all paint or something?
Right, and we usually do that in conjunction with, or in cooperation with South Hampton.
Do you know what that day is? From a personal point of view, I have some paint to give.
It's, it's usually the fall. We haven't set that date yet.
It's usually the fall?
Yeah.
And what, why is the recycling going up so soon?
Well, recycling is going up because it costs us more to get rid of the white goods. It costs us more to get rid of the TVs that we collect.
And you collect those only on that one day?
No.
TVs and things?
No, no. They, they can, they can bring any kind of metal, for some tubes, refrigerators, TVs, computers, to the highway garage first and third Saturday of every month, from eight to twelve. They, they come here, buy a punch card, a punch card, and they come in five, ten dollar denomination. So, they say, well, I've got a TV, so what's going to cost me to get rid of the TV? Ten dollars. Okay, they buy the punch card, and they bring the TV and they hand the punch card to the guy, and they'll take the TV off.
Is this service cheaper than them going to Valley to just do it there?
Well, that's something that we need to probably look at that a little, a little bit closer, because in the beginning, Valley Recycling wasn't taking a lot of the stuff that we were taking. That's changing. They are taking...
They take everything.
They take everything. They even take your, your, your trash. You can dump your trash out there for a dollar a bag. I mean, so that might be something that we need to look at. We need to look at what we're, what we're paying out versus what we're bringing in and see if there's something that is liable. Of course, if you rate, there's a, there's a thirty-five dollar sticker too, so if somebody wants to use a brush tumbler, you know, they, they can use the brush tumbler. But that was one thing that Valley Recycling wasn't doing either, but come on and stand now. They're, they're taking brushed. And so, that's, that's nothing we need to...
Okay.
What are our hours of operation?
First and third Saturday from eight to twelve.
From April till?
April to November.
April to November, first and third Saturday.
And that's at the highway garage or some?
The, the recycling end of it is at the highway garage. The brush part of it is out at the... Adjacent to the Holliver Street man.
Cemetery. Mission statement. I like that. Provide burial services. Anything new to report, John? I didn't have any questions myself.
Pretty much double-funded expenses. Personnel is less than previous years because we have new people, starting at lower pay.
Okay. Well, it says regular salary. There's one person in charge of each cemetery?
There's one, there's one full-time cemetery foreman year-round, and then the other one is a thirty-nine week-a-year position.
And that's a, is that foreman do it just Brookside or all of them?
We have East Street and Brookside, just the two.
But does that, is there one foreman or are there two?
No, he does both. So, the two of them take care of both.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any questions. I'm moving on to the tree warden unless... Do you guys have any, Joe, number? Tree warden, I'm on page one thirteen. Original budget for the tree warden services was from seventeen, now it's twenty-five. Eight thousand dollar difference. Is this warden services? Is this professional services?
This is for second round of tree bids.
This is somebody else. It's not us.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is when we, we bid it out, you know, to the public. Get anywhere from three to five companies that respond.
Is this because we have more trees to get rid of?
Yeah, George has a lengthy list of trees that are a problem in the city.
And this isn't just on park property. This is all over the city. Any city property tree, that's a tree that might be on the highway right away?
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, it could be in, you know, it could be in your yard that's only five feet off or three feet off the, you know, the curb. That's a city tree, you know.
Speaking of those, if there's a tree branch that's near electrical lines, is that Womko's responsibility or yours?
So, George will contact Womko, and yes, he sets up, and they, they have their...
Their inspectors too, right?
Yes, exactly. They have their cutters. Yes, exactly. They have their cutters and inspections come through.
Alright. I read, I was told last night by Jamie, somebody's coming in to help. There is a, oh, it's, there's a path on Mount Tom that still has some of the trees on it from the tornado. We don't have anything to do with Mount Tom, right?
No.
That whole mess will never get cleaned up.
Not by us, I know that.
I'm just asking. I guess we have to hope they overgrow so we don't see it. Is that the last thing on Public Works? Did I miss something? Alright, I'm just going to do a motion for Public Works unless councilors have anything else. I move that the city council be recommended from the finance committee to vote and to raise the appropriate sum of one million, seven hundred and forty thousand, six sixty-two, ninety-three. All in favor? Public Works is approved. But you can't go anywhere, Joe. Enterprise. Under the organizational review, are there any changes in there? Page one fifty.
No.
No? That's the same organization we've had in the past. Anything that you want to bring up in the narrative that you wanted to highlight? We have pretty good water in this city.
We have fantastic water.
According to the breweries. Seriously, that's why. He keeps telling me, Ford Hill, the guy, Eric, he tells me, he's here because of the water. Okay, then maybe I'll stay. Alright, so going to the budgets. The first one is enterprise reserves. That's just a reserve fund that you use in case you have a deficit that you have to cover. Just keep a little money in there. Okay. I'm moving on to sewer. Councilor's one fifty-five. Miscellaneous professional services. In 2017, it was forty-one. In 2018, it went down to twenty-five and it's level funded. What does that pay for? I'm looking all the way down. It's like five lines up, six lines up from the bottom. Twenty-five thousand dollars miscellaneous professional services.
Yes, miscellaneous professional services. That is for the, we pay for the officers' details when they're on the street, directing traffic for us.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
For any time you have to fix a sewer?
Anytime. Well, we have to, we're required to have an officer on the job when we are working on certain streets.
Whether it's highway, whether it's sewer, whether it's water?
Correct.
And you have a line in every, like highway, a line in sewer, a line in water for that same?
The other thing this pays for is root. You hire somebody to come in and do, you know, remove roots from sewer lines. We'll have problem areas that has root intrusion or have them take, you know, look at that. Or we need a special camera to run through a section of sewer line.
So you keep this line lower, mayor, I assume, because this is primarily for planned maintenance? Unplanned maintenance, well, if we had a water main break or sewer failure, you would, if you needed more money, you would have to get it.
Well, we would probably use another line item.
I was going to say, we would ship with...
Move money into our department.
I knew it was pension.
I, yeah, I've been here for twenty-one years and inter, inter just drive me crazy. Along with net spending and don't even get me started on education. What do you mean today's topic? We're not doing that today.
Not today's topic.
Right. Oh, not. Good. Anything else under that sewer, moving on to the next?
The capital total? Yeah, there was a three hundred and sixty thousand dollar request that didn't get approved.
Right, but you approved the three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar request last year.
Yeah, we just, we just did that.
And that, that is that. I didn't know what, I had a firmer figure on it when I came to the three thirty-five.
And you put it in the budget and you won't be doing that anymore because the mayor will have it and ask you to bring it separately.
There also was a five thousand dollar equipment rental?
Yeah, we've got to rent a, basically a brush hog that goes on the front end of the skid steer to keep our sewer lines that go through the eastmans, through the woods there. I mean, we've got to be able to get in there. So the guy's worked for the last couple of years cutting trees so that we could get access to it. Now we've got to keep the saplings down, so we've got, we don't have one of those, so we've got to rent one.
That's a brush hog first kids gear?
Yes.
I'm thinking of the things they put on the tanks for war too. I don't know why that came to me. Overtime. I'm on the wastewater. Are you guys anything else on sewer? I'm moving on.
Move on, yeah.
Overtime, sixty thousand. That's just in case we have a wastewater problem?
Nope. A lot of that is scheduled overtime per permit. We're required to have two guys in the treatment plant do certain tests and check pump stations.
And they can't do that regular hours?
Well, they do that, they do that regular hours, five days a week, but on Saturdays and Sundays, they have to permit...
They have to do it on Saturdays and Sundays. That answers the question.
Christmas, New Years, whatever, we're required to do that.
Probably a good idea. I don't have anything else on those lines. Do you have any other line?
You expect chemicals to go up?
Chemicals always go up. And the thing is, when, the way a wastewater treatment plant works, when you find a chemical that works, you stick with it because not every chemical, another vendor can make a chemical that's very similar to what you're using. But when you use it, it doesn't work. It doesn't, it doesn't create a match or things settle out. Or it doesn't do what it's supposed to do. So if you find a chemical that works, you've got to stick with it or else you're going to have an upset.
And then the price goes up because it becomes popular?
Supply and demand. So there's a twenty thousand dollar difference from 2018 to 2019, the total wastewater. And that's with all those smaller adds. Five thousand dollar increase in light, heat, and power, et cetera. I just, just wrote that down, but it looks like it's just small things in there all the way through. Any other questions on wastewater? Enterprise water. So, I'm looking at OT going up from thirty-five to sixty-five now. Thirty-five in 2017 actual. Just a question on that.
Again, we don't know how many water breaks we're going to have, you know? It's in that line item. If we don't use it, it stays there, goes back. But it's, it's, we can have a tough winter and...
Is it your concern also for the age of the pipes?
Well, every year it gets, it gets worse because, you know, some of these pipes out here are a hundred years old. So if, you know, if we get a, you know, if we get a tough winter, we're going to get more breaks. Last winter, we worked out pretty well because it wasn't too, too bad. Couple of winters ago, we got a lot of cold, cold weather. We had a lot of freeze-ups. So when you get freeze-ups, we're out. Could be on a Saturday, guess what? You have your whole crew is out there Saturday and Sunday.
And that's overtime.
Trying to get people their water back because...
The other thing I circled is, and that's police duty again, miscellaneous professional services, forty-eight thousand up to sixty-five.
Well, there's a couple, there's a couple of things there. You get the police duty is one of them. But also, that's where we do our sampling, where people are sampling.
Water sampling.
And testing. And according to, and we have to do that according to our permit.
Is that independent lab?
Those are all independent labs. We're not, we're not a certified lab. There's no way we could be a certified lab to do that. That, you're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars to be a certified lab to do that. We have to send that out.
So, quick question. Do we take our own samples or are we?
No, we take our own samples and then ship them out.
Right, but we take our own people draw the, draw the samples. We don't hire somebody, an engineering firm to come in and take the sample.
No.
Does North Hampton?
North Hampton does not.
Do they have a lab, their own lab there?
They, they...
Because they have all the, all the equipment. I took a tour of their, of their plant. They had lots of test tubes. I didn't understand at all.
Well, I believe what they have is, is equipment to test daily certain things. But when you get into testing for heavy metals and VOCs, volatile organic compounds, stuff like that, that's something that I'm sure they send out to, is a way that they could, they could fund that. You can have someone qualified on the staff to do that.
To do that. I just wonder if it'd be any cheaper to combine with a municipality somewhere? If one took over the sampling.
I don't, I don't know of any, I don't know of any town other than Springfield that probably would.
Springfield does in-house.
SWSC, yeah.
I'm sure they're not going to want to test our water.
Why would they, yeah, why would they want it?
They would be very jealous.
Thank you.
Do you know, Joe, what we test when, is it residential and business and school and?
It's, it, we test for different things throughout the entire year. Colliform, we'll test every month. I think we take, I think it's eighteen samples. We'll take nine one week and then two weeks later, we'll take another nine. We take, take, test those every month. Heavy metals, we might test once a year. Volatile organics, we might test twice a year. We have a whole sampling schedule that DEP says, this is what you'll do when.
And when we get those water sample pamphlets, which I love, that you send out, you're doing the averages of all those testings to tell the people what, the chemical compounds that are in our water, et cetera?
Yes and no. It's an average if it's below the limits. If it's over the limit, you're going to get a special mailing and say, it's over the limit. So if it's below...
I've never gotten one of those.
That's, that's a good thing. That's a good thing if you haven't got those because those can be expensive, those can be quite stressful. So, but if you're below the limit, yes, they just take the average of what you've tested for, for that year and they, and give you, and give that value.
Will we ever, this is a side thing, forget the chemical that we have in the water?
Trichloroethylene.
Trichloroethylene. Is that there forever? Does that ever get filtered out of the system eventually?
Well...
Because they stopped polluting Bradley.
Yeah, what, we've had, we've seen, we've seen values up as high as eight parts per billion. It is now down. It's probably one and a half, two parts per billion. So it is dropping, but until you see zero, we're going to keep...
They make you do that until it's zero.
So it may be another twenty years or so before that can go down.
Because that's the only time we chlorinate water, right? Because we have to spring the water up.
That's the only supply where we are required to put chlorine into because that's the only water that sees daylight down there before it sees the daylight coming out of your faucet.
And because of that, you have...
When it comes out of Nanatack or Brook Street, it doesn't see daylight till it comes out of your faucet. So if it doesn't see daylight till it comes out of your faucet, then there's no chlorine needed. But there, we have to run it through a narration tank to drive off the volatile organic compound. It sees daylight, so you're required to put it in. But we put in the absolute minimum just to carry a residual, just to say to them, look, our residual is here. We're only putting in a minimal amount and we're still carrying a residual. So that tells you there's nothing in there that is, that has to kill off. Because if we were putting in a large amount and end up with a small residual, that would tell you that it's killing off a lot of stuff. But it's not because we're not putting a lot to start with.
Okay. Any other questions?
I noticed the protective equipment went from one thousand to five thousand. I mean, certainly whoever does the work needs to have the protective equipment. What type of equipment?
You know, in this, this equipment is shared with the sewer department too. If we're going down into a manhole, you've got to have gas meters to test for hydrogen sulfide and things like that. You've got to have the proper suit to put on before you go down there. You don't want guys going down in their own, in their own street clothes, things like this. So again, there is, we have a lot of asbestos cement pipe. When we're working on a break and we have to repair that asbestos cement pipe, we have to take that asbestos cement pipe out. The guys have to wear certain clothing while they're handling that asbestos cement pipe. Even though back in the day, guys cut it and did whatever they wanted with it and then nothing happened to them. Or I shouldn't say nothing happened to them. That's the way it was. But now regulations say, guys got to be trained and they got to have proper equipment to deal with this stuff.
Okay. Anything else on water?
A quick question about enterprise in general. What percentage of your budget is met by enterprise earnings? Does that, does that be all of it or was it?
No, it's a hundred percent and then so.
What's that?
A hundred percent and then so.
That's what I thought. So, no, no, this expenditures are coming out of general fund.
Absolutely not.
No, no, this is all paid for by sewer and water rates. And I heard the rates are going up a little bit.
Yes.
And in the appendix is the chargebacks by section. So enterprise pays for multiple sections. So they pay for all their own benefits for their employees. They pay for their own liability insurance. They pay for services in the treasurer collector's office. So you can see by section what they're paying for. It's in the vote too.
They actually pay for, for the highway department to come and patch the ditch after the water department picks the water break. And the highway department has to come and put, make the permanent patch on the road with blacktop. That's also charged to them because, to the enterprise because that's, that's a legitimate expense of the enterprise.
I thought, are there a few exceptions where you can use enterprise money for other general government stuff or city stuff?
Well, there's a portionment. So if you look at the appendix, there is the, the chargeback agreement. And it's, it's four pages.
But it's for, almost for services rendered that get...
That's correct. That's a certain amount of my salary can be attributed to enterprise because I directly protect it.
Okay. Anything else on VPW first? What's the enterprise retained earnings at right now?
I don't know.
It was one seven till...
Still a three hundred and eighty.
We spent the three sixty, whatever, C thirty-five. Very good. But that's good.
Still good.
And next week, on the sixteenth, we are having a public hearing in hopes of raising the water and sewer rates because of a deficit that we've identified and will show up if we don't raise those rates.
I think you said, Melissa, that's already in the revenue expectations or not from?
Yeah, so we have to assume, we assume a pretty good increase in the water and sewer rates. And, you know, we may, we're going to have to defend that increase to DOR when we go to set the tax rate that we're not supplementing the enterprise because their, their revenues are increasing based on their increasing rates. Because we build a budget based on their billing for water and sewer and not their additional miscellaneous costs or their liens or interests or trench permits or all sorts of other things that they can collect for because they're not as consistent.
We need the structural budget.
Right, yeah. And it's part of how he's building the retained earnings too. And that's all part of what he's going to bring us that lovely report in a couple of weeks that tells us they spent a million plus already, pretty much.
Unfunded mandates.
Well, not so much unfunded mandates, but required or much needed upgrades and updates to the water system, the sewer system, the wastewater treatment plant, and storm drain system. So these are all things that, that are not unfunded. They're not telling us we have to do it. We know we need to do it. We've identified them as needs that have to be undertaken and done. We've got a treatment plant that was built in the fifties and it's been upgraded over the years. We're asking it to do something to treat to a level in 2018 that wasn't even thought of back in nineteen seventy-five. But we had to make upgrades to make it happen. We're going to still have to make additional upgrades to meet our new permit requirements. Those are unfunded mandates, but we know we have old pipes. We know we have old pump stations. Those are things that we're going to be looking at.
And the report you're getting is going to identify and prioritize what has to be done first.
I know this is a fine line for the budget discussion here because I've already gotten the questions. You mentioned, you referred to the one point seven retained earnings. And then the argument about the why you're asking for money, more money. But it sounds like that one point seven has already been pretty much... seven has already been, pretty much gone through, making upgrades?
Sort of how they fund their capital infrastructure because that's not funded from, from taxation. So you have to have a way to plan for and.
And those kind of expenses are big, so you can't have thirty thousand there.
Right.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else on enterprise, everybody? Make a motion. Move that we, the finance committee sent to the city council, a recommendation that we raise an appropriate sum of two million four hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-one cents for enterprise. All those in favor? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Culture and recreation.
Tag him up.
One twenty-five is the narrative. We start with the library. Ray McCall, she was so worried. I said, what are you worried about? We're not gonna cut the library's budget. I love her, she's a hoop.
I mean, she works so hard. All the folks. It's a great program.
I do know they're gonna come to the CPA for more money for some repairs. It's historic buildings, so they can do that. That's probably not in their budget. So page one twenty-eight, the library's budget. She did tell us, I think she, didn't she come to us, Joe, and said, I asked for three seventeen, but I just wanted to tell you why.
Soon as last year, to the full council.
She did, I think she came to us. She came to us to tell us, explain that. She was trying to give the idea of what it actually costs, even though a lot of the money that they spend comes from other sources. That's why.
And understanding that she probably can't get it, but just to get people an education of what they do.
That we actually need this much money, but we get it from other sources. I think that's what she said. You still get ten thousand from Olston? Is that true?
So far.
You say that hesitantly, do you have any anticipation we won't get it?
It used to be, and did it.
Huh?
It was forty, wasn't it?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Twenty, twenty thousand.
Okay. Um, I have no other questions on the library. Going to parks and recre. I'm looking at organizational review, John. Is there anything different in your organization, page one twenty-nine, than from prior years?
No.
Recreation, page one thirty-two. Temporary positions is up. Is that because of a mandated increase in minimum wage? I thought that was guessing. Did I open a can of worms, dude?
No, no. We, we increased our salary for temporary seasonal positions to a competitive wage scale. We are not mandated to meet state minimum wage requirements.
Cause they're temporary.
The state's, well, no, the state, the state makes a mandatory, but not for municipalities. So we don't have to follow what the state tells the local business to do. But we.
Wow.
We, we kicked it around last year. We went to a fair wage rate and we have a, we have a wage scale.
Mind if I ask?
That starts at minimum wage.
It is at minimum wage? It is at least minimum wage?
Yes.
I think that's a good thing. Just a perception of public.
But just, well, the reason is if minimum wage goes to fifteen, all of a sudden, you look at these numbers and we go to fifteen for, for small jobs.
You mean you hire less people?
We're looking at, we hire less people than we hire, we have less services and then we have less services, you know, it just, it trickles down, it just.
Right.
You know, we have the pool for two hours a day and then they're knocking on my office, you know, door when it's ninety degrees saying, Michael, my gang goes for them. So, you know, so we aren't, we don't have a minimum wage scale. We have a competitive wage scale.
But all municipalities have the same thing. A lifeguard, for instance, wants to get a job in Holyrood or here, whatever.
It could be totally, it's totally different. We did, we put it together, competitive wage scale, not other, we're not, this is not something that others towns have done or.
Well, when you say competitive, I was looking at other, comparing it to other cities towns.
Yeah, well, you can't, yeah, we, we have our own one that meets, it's very even playing field, you know, except for, you know, the state pays a lot more for their lifeguards, to use for example. But, yeah. We want that route, so that's why it's, it's more money.
Same amount of people.
Yes.
Anything else on recreation budget? Your clerical person is halftime, twenty hours.
No, that's thirty-nine weeks out of this, out of the budget.
How many hours?
Thirty to thirty-two and a half during the time of season, but the, the other weeks are paid out of revolving account.
Okay, so that's part of her salary.
It's just part of her salary. But she's fifty, yeah, she's fifty-two weeks.
Okay.
But it's only partial, seventy-five percent out of the city budget.
Temporary position, same thing in the park budget? Same competitive salary kind of thing?
Yes. We, we have an increase on that as well.
Is the salaries for, the main salaries full-time, is that for two people, one and six?
Yes. That's the park foreman and assistant park foreman, for lack of a better term, park maintenance director. So, yeah, those two are year-round fifty-two weeks, two positions right now.
What's, so Manhand Rail Trail twenty-five hundred, is that new maintenance that you're adding there?
I did that.
That's not new maintenance, no.
That's, that's, they're used to Manhand Rail Trail budget in general government, but it is really a recreational park area for the city. And so what we decided to do this year was put it as a separate line in the parks budget and it's going to be maintained and used in the same way that it has been in the past.
It's just moving it from one area.
Moving it into the recording category of parks and recreation and then, you know, with the thought that should the rail trail committee somehow want to retire of or where we as a municipality need to take that on.
We do some of the work, that's why there's twenty-five hundred there.
We actually don't do any of the work. The, the Manhand Rail Trail Committee contract services pays for most of their work through fundraising and then they open a couple of small POs for other work.
They do, they, they come to you for some money.
For this twenty-five hundred. And they, they do, I believe, some DPDW equipment and employees to do some, some brush clearing that's too big for them to handle.
Good.
Just because I know this person is in your department, didn't, cause Sam took over animal inspection and now, isn't there gonna be something else that's gonna be added to her, it's gonna do with the ordinance we passed? It's not inspecting cannabis. Is it?
Chicken.
Oh, or is it with the plastic bag? Wasn't there something?
Chickens.
Chickens, okay.
Chickens.
So is that gonna be, is there gonna be compensation for that? Where is that money gonna come from?
I don't know.
That money doesn't come out of the park budget.
Chickens, no, that's, that's where I draw the line.
It comes out of. It comes out of animal control, doesn't animal control budget in public safety. We're gonna go over in a couple of leagues and I believe Bob and the police department are managing those, that budget if you're interested in what to say.
And we added chickens to that, John, though? Is that what we did?
Something in the.
Is that what I voted for?
Yes.
Cause I think we initially assigned it to the public health agent and she was not real, and that's why it probably might go somewhere.
Yes, that was conversation.
Well, I thought she was upset about the plastic bag, but.
That's it.
Okay. We bet a thousand. Is that all? Are we really done? Okay. We're done, John. Any other questions on culture and recreation? Bill, do you have anything we forgot to answer?
No.
Okay, and a move that we approve, if I can find the wording.